Um. I was going to talk about the.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can first and then we can get some questions.
Want to see what I'm doing.
Yeah. It's not the question first.
So did you do suffer public hearings or did you do one?
We do one.
You know all of them.
Okay.
Well, do you have a student reading?
Yes.
Oh.
Do you have any problem if I start? I was gonna stop. Put them in order according to what is here. Dawn first, okay, since he's sitting here.
Okay.
Then we'll go to Stuart because they're gonna be online.
Okay.
So I'll start with Sean. I'll go to. Um, Stuart second. Do you have the other two online, Randy?
No, not yet. I did see earlier that I had, um. Michael Ross had signed in, but. He's not here now.
So he might be back.
He may be. Yeah.
And you've got another family. We lost one. So you have the other.
You know, Brian's gonna be with.
I'm not sure if he is. I haven't heard from him. We do have.
Yeah.
Um, let me see. Michael Ross is with us as well.
Yes. Oops, sorry.
Hi, Michael. Hi, Alexander.
Hello.
Hi.
The date is on March seventeenth, nine, two thousand twenty-five. This is the meeting of the Morristown Planning Board. I'm the planning chair. We're gonna do a roll. He'll call right off the bat.
Sure.
Present.
Jill Martin.
Yes.
Jane Fay.
President.
Barb Whitman.
Here.
And Daryl.
Here.
Merkel.
Open for public.
Mm-hmm.
The meeting is now open for public comments. The, uh, first application we're handing over is, uh, Sean O'Brien. Who's, uh, sitting in front of us. And I'll read the background, then you can add any details, okay?
If you want, so first, but just relax.
The property is located on Seven Smithers Road in Morristown, of course. Yeah, Sean has brought forward a request for a special use permit. He's showing us a three-bedroom residence. And he wants to turn into a short-term rental. It's on point nine six acres. He was showing us six parking spaces and one space for our boat or trailer. And I'm sure those other spaces could be used for a trailer if he needs. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Sean, we have the, we have our attention.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the board. Um, my name is Sean O'Brien. Uh, the address, I just want to confirm that it's seven JW Smithers. He just said Smithers. I just wanted to.
It's what?
JW.
JW.
I just want the record to reflect that. Uh, but no, uh, unfortunately, I mean, I'll lay on the sword in this instance. Uh, my understanding, I was unaware of this, uh, law being instituted. Apologies. Uh, rather embarrassed to be honest with you, but, uh, I was notified kindly by the, uh, co-enforcement officer and, uh, fully complied with whatever, uh, her wishes or whatever the marching orders are. Um, I also was a planning board member for the City of Augur for a number of years, so I understand that, the, uh, the positions of planning board from that perspective, and you have to protect the community. Uh, I assure you, uh, I have been open for over two years. Uh, it's very part-time. Uh, I actually reside there quite significantly in the summertime, in the summer months. Uh, and I don't manage at all. Um, I understand, I've read and can, you know, understand the, uh, the orders as far as the town looking for, um, you know, any issues, what have you. Uh, I assure you, uh, it is newly built in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Uh, it's fully, uh, certified occupancy was provided at that time. It's passed all the, uh, all the codes. Um, so it's a, it's a new property. And, uh, I will certainly, uh, I, I prefer, lack of better term, to keep the riffraff out. Uh, so I am quite choosy and, um, I'll be honest, I asked for quite a bit of money just to keep that kind of clientele out of the community and out of the neighborhood. Um, I want to be a good neighbor and, uh, currently my neighbors, uh, have family and friends that do rent occasionally. So I think we're all on the same page and I understand they need to protect the community, but I would appreciate the, uh, the approval for me to continue to operate that property and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody made. Thank you.
This is a sick move, really, but is your mom down there?
Yes.
I thought she was here.
Did you mention it? Could you tell us who your neighbors are to the left and to the right facing the road?
Uh, Jane Smithers.
Uh, no, Jane.
Has the one property and her daughter and her husband Mike and.
Oh.
Wildcats. Jessica, yes.
It's a good neighborhood.
Yes, very good neighborhood. Uh, I'm, you know, we've owned it since twenty eighteen and, you know, I, I really do enjoy Morristown and maybe I'll be here full-time at some point and this could be all a moot point, but until then, my kids go to school and I'll be here. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, board members, comments?
No, no worries.
Questions?
People around here ask them. Yeah, I like you.
Yeah, one of the things that you might mention, your, your parking accommodation. It's been an issue that's come before us, uh, at the planning board. Uh, especially since we've been looking at the short-term rentals. And, uh, it's been an issue more for neighbors than anyone else. And you seem to, with the parking spaces you're indicating here, you seem to set us up a firework plan. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that. Lisa, you have any comment on that parking line?
No.
No?
Like I said, all these that are on, um, the agenda for tonight, they've all been operating well before the law went in. They just weren't aware of it. And we, um, to my knowledge, there's never been complaints or anything on any of them, so I think they're all pretty straightforward.
All right. Uh, board members' question. Nope. Um, I'm gonna close the, uh, the comments section, the general meetings section. And, uh, do I need a vote to close on that?
No. No.
No, but I need a vote to open the regular meeting.
You can close and open the meeting at the same time. You don't need a motion.
Close and opening at the same time.
Yeah.
Motion please.
My second.
Jane?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got three votes there. Concerning this property, I think in, in the session, we've, we've gone over the details. Um, is there anything you want to question board members? Before I begin the process of issuing the permit? Don't seem to be any questions, Sean. Thank you. Um. And now I need a motion to approve. And a motion to then close.
We'll take a motion when you approve. Then I'll second it.
Okay, you've got three?
Jane.
Yes?
Yeah, I mean, take a vote. Jill? Are you ea?
Oh, yes, I'm the ea.
Okay. Jane?
Good roll call, folks.
Barb?
Yes.
And Daryl?
Yes.
Okay.
You have, you got the call?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That concludes.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you. I'll assume I'll get something in the mail or.
I'll email you tomorrow and just talk through everything.
Thanks for being with me.
Thanks, Sean.
Lisa, do they need to do the short term?
Yeah, so for that.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't need to prove. I just have to go up. I don't want this to go on record either. Something's awful. I'm just saying that I didn't know for sure if that was the place where that those people came across and eventually were picked up. There were some issues in that. Do you know that, Lisa?
Yeah.
Mine too, because we got called, but, you know.
Okay, so, but it doesn't affect that or?
Oh, no.
There was no issues where it was just.
No, it was just, yeah, a couple of promises. I think they rented.
They weren't the wrong way, or, you know, it wasn't like a.
Yeah, it was crazy. His mother caught. She saw it.
Which one you want to go up in, uh?
Alexander, yeah.
Stuart? Alex Stewart, is that you, Stuart, up on the board?
Yes, I can hear you.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
Alexander Stewart is, um, here for a special use permit. The location is at three eight nine seven, uh, Route thirty-seven in Morristown. It's a special use permit. He has a two-bedroom residence that he wants to use as a short-term rental. It's on two-point-zero acres. I see two parking spaces. And then an additional parking space for a boat or a trailer. Uh, it looks like his permits are, um, up to date in, in, in order. Stuart, is there anything else? Am I anything I have missed on that?
Um, not necessarily. Again, like the previous homeowner, I want to apologize for missing.
No, I can't hear you all.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear him now?
A little better.
Okay, maybe I'll speak very close since I'm the first one on Zoom. I just want to apologize too for not catching the rule change in twenty twenty-three. Um, also, the address, I think, is three eight nine seven B. We have an A and B down our private driveway, so I don't know if that makes a subtle difference. Um, but it is an owner-occupied home. Uh, we are in it, um, often. We live there, um, year-round. Um, the two bedrooms that we would rent out with the special use permit are our daughter's rooms, so when they're not home, we provide that opportunity, uh, originally for university functions at St. Lawrence and, uh, most recently for the Bassmaster fishing tournaments, uh, up and down the seaway. Um, the driveway is two hundred meters, so I put two parking spaces and trailer, but, uh, you could get two or three boats down there and trucks, so there's plenty of parking, um, off the driveway.
Thank you. Um, any, this is open. Do I need to open officially, Joe? No. I think we're open.
You're open to the public.
Okay. Any, now we have floor comments. Before we go to the actual session. Any questions about any of the permits, any of the filings? Okay, I want to close the general session. Uh, the open comment session without a vote, please. And you can include that in your motion to open the, the actual planning board session.
So moved.
Rule vote, our rule call, please.
What are we voting on? Yeah. Did you make a motion to approve?
Yes, I just did some.
Oh, I thought you said to close the meeting.
Well, I thought you said open and close the meeting.
Closing the open session.
Yeah.
Okay.
And opening the actual board session at the same time, all right?
Yes. Yeah.
We've done that now. We know we need to vote.
Right.
All right.
All right, Jill.
So a move made from him.
Jane?
I.
Barb?
Yes.
And Daryl?
Yes. Now running the session for the board. Are there any restrictions or anything that any of the board members want to question concerning this permit?
Lisa says it looks pretty straightforward.
It does.
Okay. Lisa doesn't have a problem.
No, her person anyway. It's the one I didn't find.
It's, um, that this way, just a touch from Mary's Wares. It's on, if you're going towards Augsburg, it'd be on your, um, list.
It's not Partridge. There are.
No. Is it the one, Alex, is this the one that has Christina Drive on the side?
Yes, that, that's the one. That's the driveway.
Yeah, and then there's a new property. Yeah, but, yeah.
It's a left-hand turn off the bridge.
Yeah, correct.
Down to the water.
Yes.
I'd like to see these places.
Any comments? I'd like to request a motion to approve then.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Water, let's do roll call, please.
No, not yet. Not till after the second.
My second.
Okay. Jill? Jill? Jane?
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
We forgot having new things.
We haven't met in so long.
Not too long.
Alexandra?
Yes.
Your, uh, your permit is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Prepare for paperwork.
Yeah, I'll start sending them off tomorrow, probably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Bye.
Now, do you see Michael Ross on board?
Yes.
There he is.
Right here, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
All right.
Hi, Michael.
Michael along. Again, apply for a, a special use permit. He's at thirty-nine seventy-five. His application is for thirty-nine seventy-five, Route thirty-seven. He has a two-bedroom rest. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
He has a two-bedroom residence. Uh, he wants to convert that into a short-term rental. It's on one-point-eight acres. He has four plus parking spaces plus a boat and curb parking. We're in the open comment session. There's no one else, but Michael, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Uh, I'd also like, I, I own this house since two thousand seventeen.
I can't, there's my screen.
As close to your microphone as you can.
Can you hear me better now?
She's coming up off the TV and it's not.
Is this any better?
No.
But it was very complete. I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions on really.
Jill, can you hear yourself?
Yes, I can. He's coming through the speaker.
You want to repeat what he said, he's saying, maybe?
Okay, go ahead, Michael. Maybe this will help.
Okay, um, I want to apologize for also not.
All right.
Perfect. Uh, not for not filing. I did not know that happened two years ago. Um, my lot is on a private drive. I have a long, probably eight, uh, one-point-eight mile, uh, driveway, so there's lots of parking, but in between my house and in my, uh, garage, you can totally fit four cars and in back of my garage, there's more for boats and trailers and everything. Um, it's private dock and everything, so there's, nobody else should be coming down the road. Uh, my neighbors to the left or to the west are April and Pete Brer. My neighbor, uh, to the right is, uh, Sandy Shiflett, who lives in Delaware. She's, she comes up during the summer as well as I do. So mostly I use it for my, my being up there on the river for myself. But I do use it for, um, like, local people who've moved away and they want to come back for a reunion or something like that, so, um, that's what I had been using it in the past for. Um, it is a two, uh, two, two-bedroom, two-bedroom, two-bath. And, um, I don't know, that's, uh, try and keep my house up and I try to keep my, my tenants, uh, uh, away from the fray like the, in the previous man was saying.
Are you, are you attracted to us from Fort Lauderdale for a while or local?
Um, I live in Fort Lauderdale, but I'm, I, we've all, my mom lives eight houses away. She's on Partridge Berry Drive, so we've spent every, well, I've spent almost every summer living up there.
Well, it's not quite summer here. We're trying.
I know. I just saw the snow melt because I have a doorbell.
It's, the weather's beautiful there.
Yes, it is.
Yes, we have tornado warning.
I heard.
I need a motion to close the general, uh, session and the public session. We go to the board meeting.
I'll do that.
You got Jill on that?
I'll second it.
Hey. Jill? Jane? Jill, Jane, Barb?
Yes, Barbara, yes.
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes. Are you now in the radio?
I'm on sound, yeah.
We're now in the board session. I need a motion to approve the permit unless someone has a difficulty or a problem.
When I make a motion, will you approve the permit? I'll second it.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes. The application is approved. Michael, thank you very, very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
In, uh, the lens room, which is quicker, you don't have that person.
I don't believe so.
On video.
No.
No? Since there's no one here, um, can we still have that open session? Jill, I don't think we do. No one's present and you have no one on the screen. Public comments.
You don't have to have.
Let's move right to the board portion.
Yeah, because, yeah.
I need a, I need a motion to open the, uh, regular board meeting.
Make the motion, we open the meeting. I'll second it.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane?
Yeah.
Barb?
Yes.
And Daryl?
Yes. Are there any comments or, uh, questions from the board?
Am I missing a page for checking the short-term rental assessment form?
Yeah, this, I have mine here. Do you have a blank one? Do you have a blank one or any chance, Jill?
I can give you this one that I have in our package.
I'm just filled out, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, so it is just one view?
No.
No, I said it is. I believe it there. See, I have more questions.
There should be three pages. It could be two.
Yeah.
Do you have it?
Oh, yeah, I do. Yeah, I was done.
So everyone that's now heard, we can move, we can conclude in just a minute. I think I should be getting six sheets. Eight sheets, two times four.
My four are right there.
Okay. Four of the short ones. Eight of the short ones.
Were you gonna approve the permit?
Yes.
You, you, you made a motion to open the meeting, but you really don't have to do that. Because the meeting is already open at the very beginning.
Oh, sure. Just you do it on.
Yeah.
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 So do you want to make a motion to approve it?
To approve it, if that's, if you're ready to do that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, will you approve the special permit for on Kirkor.
Okay.
Daryl, there's more bills. I didn't have all bills yet. About the one more, I think.
Now, tell me something. I have a bookcase full of these things.
Yeah, we did.
What do I do with them?
Yeah. Don't burn them right now, though.
You say not today.
After May fourteenth, because the burn banner's on.
Burn it, oh, that's all.
Probably kill and ask for a year or so, go find you can keep them on, I know and I've taught them.
We have records of them.
Yeah.
Everything there.
Thank you.
I think that, I think that went very smoothly. It's probably one of the smoothest for the four.
Like Lisa says, basically just check them up. They've already been run.
Right, and it's also been, these were well-prepared, I must say. Everything was beautifully done.
I was telling James before everybody else got here, I sent out ten of these notices just going by on Airbnb and VRBO and all that, because the state just did their own short-term rental laws. So starting next week, supposedly, they're going to, all these online sites have to start reporting quarterly to the state, which in turn kicks the count, it shouldn't be put off on accounting. So I was trying to get ahead of that in case there's any regulations, and we're the only ones with a short-term rental law, so ours will be probably one of the first ones going through. So I wanted to make sure that they wouldn't have any repercussions from not being registered. You know what I mean? So I was trying to get, because I knew these guys were long, you know, had existing ones already, so these guys, like I said, most of these have been renting for years, so.
But with that being said, does that mean that we're going to get a slew more because people are now applying that should have years ago or whatever?
Well, it's a catch twenty-two because, like I said, I sent out ten of these notices and with telling them the reason why.
Yeah.
And none of them were, you know, had any clue about the law. So telling them what was coming from the state and the county as far as, you know, taxes and having to report and all that, a lot of them pulled their, they're not renting anymore. They just said, we're not going to deal with, you know what I mean? So there's, you have, you know, double-edged sword there. Some of you probably would get more, but in turn, a lot of them have pulled their listings and don't want to deal with it.
How do you, how do you, how do you keep track of the fact that they're telling you the truth when they say they don't want to run the law?
Just periodically go on, you know what I mean, and just see if they're still there and go by and see. In the summertime, I know the ones now, so it's easy to monitor, like vehicles and but again, with short-term rentals versus a regular rental property, it's hard to tell gauge with just going by vehicles, because anybody can rent their house, you know, a house out that they own, and there's no regulations on it, but maybe short-term rentals, you know.
It was interesting too, all four of them said it's usually family, you know, or some, a bedroom, right? Your daughter's bedroom.
Well, yeah, the steward there, they live there all day. They're just trying to make a little to cover cap, you know, their expenditure now that the kids have moved out, so, you know.
Yeah, it sounds like Orion lives there compared to the summer.
Oh, yeah, 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 so.
Are any of your calls, angry calls over bureaucracy?
No, no, it's just, I mean, at first, they, a couple of them gave me a little bit of, but then talking through and stuff, I was like, I'm trying to help, I think, you know? So like, I'm just trying to make you guys aware of what's coming if you don't watch this stuff.
And there should be a one and none.
Yeah.
There should be a one and none. If they choose not to, they choose not to. If they get caught, well, that's their problem.
Exactly.
You've done your job.
Yeah, I mean, they're making money off it. We get our application, you know what I mean? That's I'm not getting anything out of this.
And even more than fair, you've noted mine, so they can't say they're ignorant of it.
There are a couple more that I'm waiting on for applications to come back, but a couple of them were trying to decide, because they're older and, you know, so they're still trying to go through the process and see if it's something they want to keep going with or maybe, you know, but.
It's a hassle.
Yeah.
Lord, my parents did the same thing, and they're now in Lake Ontario, but bottom line is my mom and dad in the seventies was cleaning up after they left. I mean, at seventy, who wants to do somebody else's cleaning up? Me neither.
I don't want to do mine.
So when you send them these forms, you also send them the requirements that have gone forward for what a short-term rental is and what they have to follow.
I sent, for these guys, one, I sent them a basic letter at first that just stated, you know, our town has a short-term rental law. I know that you're advertised, so we, we have to give you, you know, approved through the planning board. And then when they call up and ask what the process was, I sent them a copy of the whole law for a short-term rental with all the steps and criteria for what's required and all the forms that are needed and all, you know what I mean? So, and walked them through the process, and if they're missing anything, I said, I did a lot through email, because a lot of them are out of town, so. But, yeah, it's been just a year, it's been probably a three-month process.
Now, is Michael Ross a lawyer?
He.
CPA or something?
He has been, I, well, he's been doing this for a year. I think he might, I can't remember what he does. I used to clean that house for him for the short-term rental. Yeah. This was probably three years ago or so, but, yeah, I used to clean that, so.
It'll ever happen, everything.
Yeah. He is very organized. He does everything. Yeah, he's very organized and thorough.
When you get into this subject of short-term rental, let's say somebody over the years hasn't followed the rule. Hasn't cared to follow the rule. I would imagine septic could be one of the stickiest issues.
I don't see where that's a criteria for a short-term rental, honestly.
Oh, all right.
Because there, when you build a house or you maintain a house, your septic is based off on the number of bedrooms. So if you have a three-bedroom house, they're not adding on any bedrooms to do the short-term rental. So whatever's there is already, it's already sufficient for what volume is going to be going through there, and these are short-term. So you figure a weekend, they're not going to blow out a septic system in a weekend or a few days or whatever. And that's where I said, it's, it's, that always threw me off when I see that in this law is because if you look at a regular rental property that somebody rents out for a month, three months, a year at least, that's not a criteria for a rental. We don't even get involved in rental properties other than these, so it's, you know what I mean? My job, I look at it going, it could have no bearing on a short-term rental, in my opinion, but, and then part of the law stated that they are supposed to assign an affidavit saying, like, they have their waterings up to date and smoke detectors and all that, and then I go in and verify them, but I had to hand our, my permit program where I had to plug all this information and spit out stuff, that shut down. So I had to go through and hand type all this stuff back up, so that didn't get, a couple of them got them and have returned them, but that'll be part of the permit program. I'll make sure to have that in the file before I actually issue them their permit and make sure they're verified, but, yeah.
I tried to, I've asked Pam Sovey, this is before.
Your time.
But remember, the Blue Lake? And there were so many people who were so angry about that one section, the water pouring down. We never approved it until they had a new septic system.